So a little bit Community Energy South, we were set up in 2011 to support the community energy sector in the south east of England. We trained 12 groups down in in the south east in Sussex and Kent. And and we were set up to support them in their growth back before the Olympics in 2012. And and then over the years, we do a lot of lobbying in government. We work very closely with Community Energy England. And we really focus these days on capacity building for community, community energy sector. And around innovation and new business models, we do quite a bit of lobbying with government. We have a monthly newsletter, so people who don't know about it do join up to that. And we can link you up with groups. So that's very exciting. And basically, we've got access to community energy groups across the UK and specialists who have been doing this for a long time, like Nicola who is here and Liz. And and what we try and do is pair up new community energy groups with existing community energy groups who have worked on on projects of all varieties from hydro to solar on schools to, you know, wind farms or solar solar farms and heating projects and electric vehicle projects. So and we do a lot of work building relationships across the southeast to try and support the sector from the gas networks to UK power networks and 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 the county councils that work in this space, like Essex County Council, who are very forward thinking. And there's also a regional energy hub that Bays have established that also works alongside that. And we made sure back several years ago that we worked with Essex County Council and the local authorities to embed community energy in the regional strategies, which is really set a foundation for that. And then you've got, there's currently the one of the last of the European projects that actually goes until 2023 is the Eastern New Energy Project and the Southeast New Energy Project coming. And we're part of that with a whole network of energy specialists focusing in on the region and and helping support the race to net zero with new business models and and local economic development. So that's, that's a big part as well. And here's a few of the southeast community energy groups. You can go on our website and and have a look at them, some great projects, you know, new and old and sustainable Overton over in Hampshire are really moving very fast and catching up with our support and our mentoring support. And you've got like energized Sussex Coast in Hastings, who have been going for 10 years and really focused on fuel poverty. Or Ferry Farmage is a solar farm that provides community investment, but also annually a £60,000 community benefit fund. And Nicholas, who's going to be speaking, is from Maiden Energy in Maidenhead, where they've got lots of really exciting sort of solar reef projects, but also heat projects with leisure centres and on a boathouse and things like that. So do dig into our website and have a look at them. And then we've developed our Pathways Programme, which is really being driven alongside Essex County Council's climate change strategy, looking to help establish a network of community energy groups in Essex. And we have a toolkit for that, that you can access on our website and access to our mentoring teams. And so, yeah, that's very fast going through. I didn't want to keep you up for too long, but do keep in touch, have a look at our website, join in and and give us a call. Thank you. So Liz, that was a very fast and run through of the Community Energy South.
Thank you.
I'll pass on.
Yeah, we'll hand over to Matt now, who's going to tell us about the Climate Action Fund. That, well, I'll let Matt talk about it. He knows far more than I.
Hi there. Morning, everybody. Just bear with me while I bring up the slides. One moment. Doesn't seem to now want to locate the slide deck. There we am. Just going to close down PowerPoint and see if I can bring it up.
Okay, well, while you do that. While you do that, don't worry, we'll we'll take over so you can focus on one thing. So just to say to everybody, if you've got questions, do put them in the chat box. Because we'll we'll kind of scroll through the chat box and often people end up asking questions and sharing really useful things in the chat box too. So do feel free to feel free to contribute during the presentations in the chat box. How are you getting on there, Matt? Of course, we did a practice and everything worked really well before we went live.
Yeah, it looks to have found it this time. Bear may understand it. Yeah, always seems to be the way, doesn't it? Can everyone see that? Okay, now. Yeah, lovely. Right. Okay, I'll just go to presentation. Great. So I suppose just by way of an introduction, my name is Matt Welsh. I'm the Lead for Strengthening Communities at Essex County Council. The team itself is primarily a communities kind of voluntary sector focused team working to kind of build capacity and kind of of the sector and help with its development alongside some of our voluntary sector partners. For the purposes, I suppose, of this climate action work that's going on at Essex County Council, given our experience with working with communities and engaging with communities, we've been brought in to effectively design this fund. So that's what I'm going to tell you a little bit more about today and how you can go about making applications. So by way of a bit of background to this, I'm sure some of you may have seen this already. This work actually runs alongside and relates to the Essex Climate Action Commission that has been set up to advise Essex kind of leaders, stakeholders around how to how to tackle climate change in Essex. The commission has now launched officially launched its latest report, which is Net Zero Making Essex Carbon Neutral. And within that report, there's a number of recommendations that have been set out around how we can reach net zero and deal with various risks associated with climate change. What we've therefore done is set up a grants programme linked to some of these kind of priorities set out in in that reports with a view that it's been developed to help ECC to engage with local communities and discover some of those kind of very local solutions to some of the challenges that have been sort of identified, recognising that not only local challenges can be identified locally within communities, but the solutions can often be found there too. So that's kind of, I suppose, the golden thread within this, with this, within this fund, it's around kind of engaging communities and seeking local kind of solutions to some of the challenges that have been identified through the Climate Action Commission. Just to give a brief overview of the fund itself, as I say, we're looking to develop some community led responses to the issues highlighted in the report that not only seek some of the kind of practical solutions, whether that's things like solar panels, for example, but also maybe hopes to begin some of those behavioural changes in our residents that maybe will help with some of the longer term sustainable outcomes that we're looking to achieve. Recognising that actually in some instances, sometimes simple behaviour change can be a catalyst for really strong outcomes in this area. And that the activity can make environmental action easy, accessible and attractive for our residents. The pot itself has half a million pounds allocated to it. And it's designed to support organisations of differing sizes. That our team, we're very engaged with working with grassroots organisations and we've seen that actually through the pandemic, that there's been a lot of grassroots neighbourhood level organisations that have mobilised to support people. And we can see that within that, you know, we can see the real effectiveness of working at that level. So we wanted to design some funding pot that would also help enable some of these groups to do things at a local level, but potentially begin to develop over time too. And this goes right the way through to some of more larger established organisations in Essex. So we've split this pot into two pots. So we've got the small grants funds. So this is grants of up to £5,000, which arranges smaller localised community organisations. And that includes kind of unconstitutional groups. And I can talk a little bit more around how some of these groups that maybe have a bit less experience of applying to these sort of things, or maybe don't have the correct policies in place, how that can be supported too. And then also, we then have a larger pot of grants of up to 20,000. This is additionally aimed at schools, recognising that young people, children, young people are going to play an important role in this work over time. And it's good to try and embed some of this learning and education at that sort of, you know, young, some of our younger residents. But also, this is certainly open to larger, more established voluntary sector organisations. And we've kind of put a bit of a threshold here. So organisations earning over £100,000 per annum, we'd consider those eligible for the larger pots. So as I said previously, so it's voluntary sector organisations constituted and unconstitutional that can apply and also schools are eligible to. So we've set this fund up to align with the key priorities that our colleagues identified within the Climate Action Commission reports. And you can see them kind of on the screen here. So we've got land land use, green infrastructure. So this is around kind of improving green space, green infrastructure and helping to kind of deliver equality of life and environmental benefits for our communities. The the energy priority, which I'm sure the one that most of you, you guys will be most interested in. So for example, this could be around widening widening access to or uptake of renewable energies. Built environment. So this is around implementing initiatives that might help us meet net zero standards in our buildings and urban landscapes. Transport, so around sustainable travel. Maybe these are sort of helping us to kind of reduce our uses of cars, maybe take more public transport, perhaps, you know, introduce cycling schemes, walking schemes, for example. Waste, so essentially making it easier for people to recycle, repair or reuse goods and community engagement. So we recognise that obviously communities and our residents are key in making this happen. So we'd like to see projects that do engage with our communities, whether that's around raising kind of awareness of of the benefits of undertaking work like this and ultimately supporting some of that sort of behavioural change at local levels that will hopefully grow, grow over time. So in terms of eligibility, just outlined some examples of the types of things that we're we're looking to see. Again, this is an exhaustive list. We recognise that when setting up a programme designed for local communities, effectively, we've tried to keep it as broad as possible within the kind of restrictions of the priorities of the commission, ultimately recognising that we want to give organisations kind of level of flexibility to tell us what they think a good solution to some of these challenges. So this, these are examples, but certainly if you are doing things outside of this, we're certainly keen to hear, hear from you. So it may well be reduced recycle reuse projects, perhaps around food, clothing, furniture, biodegradable waste. Anything that's kind of promoting sustainable travel. Some good ones may be around community gardening, which might help promote biodiversity, but actually also improve kind of connections, cohesiveness within communities, particularly post kind of Covid. We recognise there's a lot of people that have been very isolated during this time and projects like this not only help meet maybe some of our climate action priorities, but actually also help bring people together and provide various kind of support for people that perhaps have been kind of experiencing high levels of isolation and disconnection from their communities. Again, similar idea around making use of better use of green space in communities activities, whether that's gardening, whether that's I don't know, athletic, physical pursuits, things like that. Some of the more sort of practical solutions we're interested in too could be upgrading community facilities to make them maybe more energy efficient, could be solar panels and, you know, it could be that schemes that help maybe improve kind of energy efficiency for vehicles, if there's any community transport type schemes, for example. So there are some examples, but as I say, not exhaustive. In terms of the eligibility, it's relatively broad too. So revenue costs, which means marketing communications costs. Capital costs are eligible and are assessed on a case by case basis. As long as you can sort of clearly demonstrate how how those costs will meet the objectives and timescales of the funds in the guidance documents. And I'll share a link to those on my final slide. But there's more information in there around some of the restrictions around it. So again, things around permissions to do the work on certain sites or any ongoing responsibilities of managing any capital expenditure or disposal costs in the future. So so some of those terms and conditions will be set out in the guidance documents. And again, we recognise that these projects don't necessarily run themselves. So if there's any staff or volunteer costs that can be applied for, providing that we can see a clear alignment to how they help deliver the outcomes of the projects. And then speaking of the outcomes, so in addition to the main priorities I've highlighted earlier on slide five, we also would like to see evidence from applications around how applicants think that potentially that their activity might help change behaviours of Essex residents or any of those participants that are engaging with those activities. For example, it may well be with energy projects that, you know, it might be providing advice and information to people that changes their energy consumption habits. It might therefore help maybe lower utilities. It might help address any fuel poverty issues that residents are experiencing again. From our team's perspective, we're quite heavily involved in various kind of fuel poverty projects and winter warmth activity. So things like that, we're particularly interested in. We know how important they are to our residents. Again, we're also there interested, as I say, from a community's point of view. It's not just the climate action stuff, although that is the primary interest of this fund. We're also interested in understanding what the secondary benefits might be of your of your activities, recognising that projects often deliver all sorts of positive outcomes for people that engage with them. So it may well be that through a sustainable travel scheme, it increases cycling activity and people in particular areas of physics, that that might improve physical activity and sort of general wellbeing. It might be a community garden project, for example, helps bring people together and improves cohesion and connection with your neighbours. We know that when people are well connected, it makes it easier for them to access the support they need. And it's generally good for one's kind of mental health in terms of producing kind of social isolation and other kind of key priorities that the council are interested in. As I say, if we're talking about energy efficiency stuff, it might help with address issues like fuel poverty. And we know that is a big issue in Essex. So reducing any cost of utilities and bills is obviously a really positive outcome to this work too. And again, kind of improved air quality and general kind of, I'm sure there's sort of copious amounts of outcomes that we've not even listed here that projects would be able to demonstrate. So in terms of giving a rough idea of what a successful application may look like, so as always, with funding, and I'm sure colleagues that will be talking around the fundraising sort of, sort of best practice after after my presentation will sort of attest to that we're interested in projects that demonstrate strong evidence of need. So it might be that certain areas of Essex have high levels of pollution or congestion or low levels of recycling rates, for example. Recognising that your priorities and interests are largely lying in the kind of energy efficiency side of things, but sort of thought show you the kind of broad kind of range of this funds, just in case you are engaging with any other community groups that might be doing stuff in this area. But as I say, interested in making sure there's a clear alignment to the fund objectives and priorities. Again, community engagement and seeing behavioural change in our residents is important to us through through doing this. We'd like to see not only maybe some of the immediate outcomes that can be satisfied, but whether or not over the course of a project that maybe it begins to embed slight behavioural changes. We recognise that they're not going to be achieved overnight, but it's kind of an interesting kind of thing for us to see, see how that develops. And also, I suppose, it's an aspirational kind of point for us, really. Again, like all our activities, we need them to be open and accessible. So that's kind of making sure there's equity, diversity and inclusion for that. We want all our kind of communities and residents to be able to access stuff like this in the future. So you know, that's kind of interesting to us. And we recognise that there may even be sort of priority targeted groups that perhaps are less engaged in certain activities like this, that could well be engaged through these projects too. As I say, and that can be sort of evidence through kind of strong community engagement and participation. Some of the kind of more standard stuff in terms of bid writing. So we'd like to see that these activities are achievable and realistic. Particularly with the timeline timelines involved in terms of how long the the funding kind of covers. Value for money is kind of always one that we'd consider. And speaking of value for money, the funding is also designed to help match fund activity. So we recognise that maybe in some of the kind of more ambitious projects potentially, if there's kind of slightly higher capital costs involved, certainly our funding can be used to match fund larger activity too. And that can, there's opportunity to discuss those in any applications. The the last point I would sort of touch on that was requested through colleagues as we designed this was also, and this isn't necessarily going to be prior other other activities, but there is also an interest, as I say, just to see what projects are doing to involve children and young people. Recognising that they'll be important people moving forwards in terms of how how we address climate challenges in Essex in the future. So in terms of time scales of this programme, so this programme is a rolling programme and applications are welcome at any time. The fund itself has been set up to run alongside the time scales of our commission. So the fund will close on the 31st of March 2023. However, we are inviting applications and would encourage kind of a bit of a first come, first serve approach. So it's likely that as as the visibility of this programme grows, as I say, it's kind of fairly recently launched, that we would expect funds to be sort of utilised prior to the end of this. Well, well in advance of the 31st of March. And again, we endeavour to make those awards on a rolling basis with a view that we would be looking to hold sort of fairly regular funding panels throughout this time, which involves some of the experts from our Climate Action Commission to people ultimately make some of those decisions around those applications. And again, any project that is funded will then have 12 months to to spend their grants. So I've just added this final slide. It may well be that this doesn't necessarily apply to your organisations. Maybe I think, I'm not sure many of you are kind of constituted already. And again, this is kind of where appropriate and the but effectively there's kind of, when working with community groups, we do like to see copies of these policies and this information. If there are any groups that don't have these or, you know, our groups are unconstitutional. And as I say, our team is a community focused team and we have a strong working relationship with our CVSs across Essex, the Council of Voluntary Services. So we can also make those introductions to where relevant for those groups if they need assistance with developing any of this. Not only is it useful just, you know, to support an application to this fund, but it's the sort of thing that funders are interested in generally for a lot of applications. So if we can also help facilitate some of that development in community groups through through this fund, then certainly we're keen to do so. So I think this is my final slide. So I'm sure these slides will be shared, but what I've done here is just link you to the application documents which are found and they're hosted on the Essex County Council website under this top link. The application guidance documents that will tell you a bit more about the eligibility and provide more information around how to apply can be found there, as can the application form. If you have any questions or queries, you can email us at the climate.challengedprize email address. That's how we're managing it. And applications when being submitted can also be submitted through that email address too. And finally, I've also just included the most recent climate action report as well from the Climate Action Commission, because that provides some additional context around some of the key priorities for the commission, which might help provide some additional context and information around how you can structure your bids. But that is it from me. Happy to answer any questions. And are you okay for me to stop sharing my screen? As unfortunately, I can't see anybody.
Yes, do stop sharing your screen. There are a couple of questions. I think we might as well have answered now because, because they're very specific to your, to your particular fund. So there was a question from Leanne Dalby of Hawkewell Parish Council. Leanne, do you want to ask a question? Do you want me to ask it? It was basically if groups can apply more than once to the fund.
Yeah, so where we're at with that, so we've we've run previous funds throughout the year, more kind of COVID response stuff. And the general consensus from our team is yes, if we can demonstrate that maybe it's for separate activity. Maybe there's two different projects, I think we'd be open to that. Or if there's really strong evidence that potentially above the threshold is required to deliver a project of high impact. So I think that would be assessed on a case by case basis, but there is there is kind of a track record for us to support that sort of stuff. I think I would probably say we're more comfortable with it's for two separate projects. But again, because this is being sort of awarded on a case by case sort of basis and on a rolling basis too. I think that there's sort of things that we'll look at over time as when they come in. It may well be in the first instance that you prioritise your needs. As I say, we're kind of keen to make sure that we're funding equitably across the county. But I wouldn't necessarily discourage it at this point, but perhaps just inquire through the email address that's provided so someone can answer, answer that. As I say, I think we're happy to have conversations with people if they've got questions that maybe fall into grey areas of the eligibility or maybe just outside. The programme itself is a bit of a pilot. It's the first time we've sort of done something like this within the climate space from our team's point of view. So it may be that actually some of the questions people have might actually inform the future direction of this, if there are any sort of changes required, just to make sure that anyone that wants to apply has the opportunity to do so.
Okay, Nicola, and I realise I've got Leanne's question wrong.
Oh, yes. I was going to follow up on Leanne's question. Thank you. Leanne asked if parish councils can apply for a grant or is it just community type groups? And I wanted to add on something to that. Thank you. It was about the turnover size. The guidance specifies 100k turnover. From from those people who represent parish councils, does that typically represent your turnover? So two questions.
So the parish council question I can answer in terms of eligibility. So as I say, this fund was co-produced ultimately with our colleagues that manage this side of it. So the eligibility in terms of the organisations, I suppose, was informed by colleagues. What I have actually identified through assessing some original initial inquiries that have come through this is that we do think there is a gap there for parish councils. Our team works quite extensively with a kind of parish council activation programme. And we recognise the benefits parish councils have at that community level. So I have actually come back to recommend the inclusion of that. So I'm just working on that at the moment. In terms of, I can just see village halls come through actually, which is a good point because there's also something I can share with you. It it may not, I think, if you're looking at energy efficiency stuff for parish, for village halls, that might be something that will then become eligible. When we're talking about future eligibility of parish councils, as I say, I'm having those conversations at the moment, maybe to revise the guidance to include that eligibility because we recognise the value of doing so. But we've also got a separate village halls fund that's the rural community council of Essex are managing on our behalf too. That may be of interest to you, but this one's kind of firmly within the context of Covid, so around making premises kind of Covid safe. So there's opportunities to do various adoptions to village halls if there's kind of ventilation and things like that that's required. So I appreciate that's a bit of a tangent, but I did see village halls mentioned, so there may be an interest there as well for 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 colleagues on this call. But yeah, in terms of parish councils, I'm actually actively having those conversations right now just to see about extending it to them because we think there's value to supporting them through this programme.
Thanks, Matt. I think we should, shall we pass over to Nicola now? And also, I would just want to say, Luciana, thank you for answering some of those questions during the chat. So I'm going to hand over to Nicola now.
Thanks, Liz, and thanks, Matt. That was a great presentation. Lots of detail in there that people, I'm sure, will be very pleased to have heard. Okay, I'll share my screen. Can everybody see that? Great. Okay. Many of you will know me as a mentor within the Community Energy South Pathways Programme to provide local energy groups with structured advice, as Ollie mentioned, in setting up and seeking funds for your initial projects. I provide this mentoring beside my colleague, Michael Bevan, and CES team. I think some of you will know Michael rather than myself. So we have a lot to share, having very similar roles to yours in the community. Because Michael and I are volunteer directors of a community benefit society, Ollie mentioned, Made Energy. Through that, we've secured grants for feasibility studies and such, and a community investment for solar and heat pump projects. We also run our own fundraising company specialising in community shares and fundraising from government and charity grant makers, which makes us quite useful for for the programme, bringing that sort of set of expertise available to you through the through CES. Which is useful. Okay, I've, what I've done is I've I've shown you my very last slide. To start with the first one, here you go. Here's my name. This session, I'll talk through, I'll highlight funding opportunities available at the moment. How to create strong funding applications. And then at the end, we'd be really keen for Essex groups to have a chance to discuss ideas and explore collaboration opportunities. I love this slide. It shows what we're here for, what vision we've got for community energy, demographic, democratic control and benefit, job creation, livable homes, communities empowered to lead. But I pop that in. It's why we're all motivated to help create community owned energy and why funds are emerging in turn to help you achieve this, such as the Essex Challenge Fund. And here's a quick map that we used at the Gridserve event on Saturday to show the distribution of the groups that are established and the groups that are emerging with the, with the green and red triangles. The whole team at Essex County Council and CES are really quite thrilled to see so many of you starting groups and establishing projects. We know how much hard this work, how, how much hard work this is for you as volunteers, because you're doing it in your spare time. So well done on that. It's fortunate for you that the County Council is so supportive in resources and in terms of funding. Community energy projects in Essex, as per most areas, usually seem to form into force of columns, electricity, heat, electric vehicles or hydrogen vehicles and energy saving. So you're probably thinking about activities around those. If you've got other ideas, then great, throw them in the mix and talk with us about them. But I thought this is a very useful slide which captures the energy focus of those groups. You'll be keen to know where to find funds in addition to the Essex one that Matt described. I've broken my presentation down into two categories. The first is statutory bodies. And the second is charitable sources. And by that I mean trusts, foundations and corporates. There's a lot to digest, don't worry. We have a mix of expertise to help you. And even if you're at an early stage as a group or you're an individual interested in creating or joining a group, contact us and we can discuss what your journey will look like. So this is my first page of the statutory sources. I've got two pages for each. Starting off with the Essex Action, the Climate Action Challenge Fund, Matt mentioned, he just told all about that. Then got Power Partners Community Investment Fund. This could be ideal for something like energy champion work led by your volunteers. An idea could perhaps be a joint bid with other groups here today to cover a larger geography than your own perhaps. And perhaps CES could support you to do that. So talk to us if interested. Number three is the Rural Community Energy Fund provided by, by government. This is an ideal place to start, to build in, buying consultancy work, to work through your project ideas. Your group must already be constituted and meet lots of criteria for this fund. There's an expression of interest stage. Talk to Michael or myself, we can help you to navigate this fund, but it's a brilliant place to start. There's 40k available, up to 40k for feasibility projects. And once you've proved feasibility, there's another 100k pot available for actually pushing forward and developing those projects. And that fund is available on an ongoing basis for now. Then there's the ERDF Fund, so European Funding, known as Low Case. Essex County Council has much expertise and experience in this, so you can talk to any of us if interested. And that's up to 40% of project costs for eligible small businesses with projects interested in decarbonizing the energy system, improving energy and resource efficiency and preserving and enhancing the natural environment. So there's a whole range of themes there. And that's up to 10k and but it's an ongoing fund. So do have a look at that because it would be really useful ongoing. If I've got any of that wrong, Luciana, please do correct me. It's my second page on the statutory sources of funding. I've got OFGEM at the start, which is the Strategic Innovation Fund, and that fund was announced very recently and it's for large scale funding, which could be ideal for a region wide scheme. I put this in there because it would be daft not to. It's very big and it probably wouldn't suit a lot of what you're doing. But if we could come together in sort of joint fashion, you never know, that could be something quite, quite strategic. Then there's the Energy Saving Trust Grants. They come and go, there's several available and they vary in size and scale, as you can see. Bids for this must be led by a registered charity. A lot of you are probably thinking about being an unconstituted group for now or a community benefit society, but this is for registered charities. The Redress Fund involves service testing of scalable innovations. The Carbon Emissions Reduction Fund is about scalable projects in energy generation, distribution or usage. And interestingly, there's the E-Cargo Bike Grant, which is a different scale, much smaller. And that's to support businesses to switch to local sustainable transport. There's, there are also, there's also an offer for a maximum of five bikes per organization or joint bids on a high street basis. And I think that's really interesting. Imagine local shops in one high street area coming together and buying the bikes and forming a sort of brand. That could be really quite compelling for, for a small geography. That's only available until middle of December. Last one here is the landfill credit scheme that I've put on. That's available through NTRUST. And you can also find details on different landfill or waste operator sites like Veolia, CETA and so on. And that fund provides grants for actual physical improvements. Opportunities vary and include remediation of the effect of pollution, public communities and the promotion of diversity, biodiversity. So it varies greatly. Written a few of these bids. They are, they are quite strict, but as long as your project fits, you stand a good chance. If I could ask everyone to be on mute, please. Now moving on to charitable sources, trusts, foundations and corporates. This is my first page, got four here. I'm starting with the lottery. There are many funding strands available through the lottery at the moment. The two I'm putting here, I think, are most suitable for small groups because they're up to 10k and they're fairly flexible. There are multiple opportunities. Funding for the lottery is usually to build strong relationships across communities, improve the places that matter to people and help more people reach their potential. It's all about early intervention and bids must be truly beneficiary led. Because the money comes from lottery players, so they want the, the benefits to reach many, many people of every, of every background. Two projects here, the Together For Our Planet Fund, for small projects, for early stage groups, could be ideal for many of you today. The deadline there is 18th of November. So I think that's COP related. So if you've got an idea, have a look through the guidance. The guidance is ever so clear, same for awards for all. Meet the guidance, which is fairly easy and you should stand a good chance. Awards for All is, has always been a great funding opportunity for feasibility studies as well, with much less strict criteria than the Rural Community Energy Fund. So consider that for feasibility studies. It's quite COVID related at the moment, but it's worth talking to them. You may also have heard about the Larger Reaching Communities Fund or Partnership Funding. These take considerable planning and usually have a much better chance if you've been successful with a small lottery grant first. So if you've got ideas for a big lottery bid, try and go in with a smaller awards for all or Together For Our Planet application first, even if it's only a six month project. It'll probably take you six months to get ready for a larger lottery project anyway. Competition is really, really fierce, as you'd imagine at the moment. I've got here the Garford Weston Foundation. They're a huge, huge organization, huge charity, giving away a lot of money. And that is for registered charities only. They can apply for various funds towards capital or project cost. Their criteria has changed quite a lot over the last six years or so, but have a good look through their website. It's really, really helpful. The applications for the Garford Weston Foundation are usually quite big in terms of the amount of information you need to supply. But it's worth having a look through. And I don't think there are any deadlines on there at the moment. And then there's the Community Foundations. There's one for Essex, as there is in most counties. And these, the foundation presents various small opportunities. Most of them are COVID related, as they are across the whole country at the moment. So I would recommend hooking up to their newsletter and staying aware of bidding opportunities. It's more about people's welfare than climates have changed, but a lot of the time that is interrelated, isn't it? So you could find, you could put a great case forward. My second slide on charitable sources. Got here the Power To Change. See their Cryo Match Programme, which is ideal for for matching your community investment through shares, for example. Power To Change are a fabulous organization and they support new and existing community businesses. It's all about empowering local people to address local need. And they're a great source of advice. There's lots of information on their resources, networking opportunities and so on. Have a, spend some time looking through their website. I've put the Centrica one on here. It's not open to bidding at the moment, but they are interested in hearing about projects. So they're kind of open to inquiries. They've got a fund available called Energy For Tomorrow. Well, it has been available. And that's about empowering communities and startups who are creating initiatives that can accelerate the energy transition landscape and deliver social impact. That's up to 100k. So that's quite a big fund when it, if it reopens, I think it will. They're, as an industry player, they're looking for opportunities that are scalable, as are a lot of organizations. And there's the MCS Charitable Foundation. Projects, oh, that's the Micro Certification Scheme Charitable Foundation. The projects for this should have a UK wide impact via national reach or innovation that you come up with that can be replicated, adapted or scaled up. So anything that's transferable. They offer seed funding, funding for proof of concept, research and development and sharing good practice. Really worth looking through their website. It's quite a chunky fund up to 50k and there aren't any deadlines, which is really helpful. I've added on the end, IBICO. They have, they had a fund called Innovation in Affordable Low Carbon Home Heating. It's currently closed, but I think it's looking to open. So it's one to watch. As, as with a lot of funding opportunities, it's easy to, to work towards a deadline, but it's better, I'll say more later on, to put deadlines out of your mind and work on creating a solid project. So that's why I'm saying link up to a lot of these funds, watch what they're doing. The aim of this fund is to support home energy transition to zero carbon, affordable for low income households. That's about research, but really good to keep an eye on this sort of funds. So that's a chunky set of funds that you can look through, statutory and charity. But about finding other grants, of course, you'll know that there are many other opportunities that come up in newsletters and on resource pages of Community Energy England, loads of other places. Databases get out of date really quickly. As I was doing my search to make sure that the ones that were relevant for this talk, a lot of them were out of date already and a lot of them have a page unknown when you go through a web link. So they get out of date so quickly. The best thing you should do is sign up to the newsletters of all the potential funders and sign up to funding alerts as appropriate. Review potential sources in your community, such as the Essex Fund, and keep an eye out on who funds similar organizations in your field. One of the things I do regularly as a fundraiser is when I'm looking to support an organization, I'll find another organization similar to them who might be further along the journey, slightly bigger or slightly more successful or demonstrating best practice. Go to the Charity Commission website, have a look at their latest accounts and see if they've mentioned who funded them. Quite often, organizations will give thanks. And so then you can perhaps link up with them on their social media. I'm going to make this grant, this presentation available for you afterwards anyway. After grant funding, if your organization is a co-op or a community benefit society, you may be suited to raise large scale investment from your community to scale up or create a capital project, you know, purchase infrastructure that you can then use to stick on a school roof, for example. There are hundreds of examples of success across the UK, saving energy, generating it and helping those who can't afford it. Have a look on the Community Energy South website. Talk to us. There, there's loads and loads of great practice out there. And don't feel that you have to start right at the beginning. Now, how to be successful in gaining funds. This is the chunky part of my presentation. Because funding has become very, very competitive, so it's really important that you get it right. It's so demoralizing if you spend time doing, making a bid that is 90% there, you think it's really good because you really believe in it. You've got to get it right, otherwise it wastes your time and it's, it's demoralizing. And of course, then you're, you're further down the, the deadline or the targets you've set yourself for making change happen through your organization. Making funding applications is all about the preparation. I can't state this enough. So regards to preparation, I've got several slides here. And I'm going to start with organization readiness. Here are my top tips. Have clear accounts and or bank records. And make sure any anomalies are very easy to explain. So if you've gone up and down over the few years and you're not actually a startup, you've gone up and down, make sure you can explain why if they ask you. You don't want to look like you're an untrustworthy source to put their money in. Evidence of being effective. If you can, have some evaluation and impact data ready where relevant. Whatever it is, just to prove that what you say that you can do has actually happened or is possible. Evidence of need for your work or specific project. And this is something that the lottery pushed forward really quite strongly. You've got to prove that the community actually want this to happen. You might be three or four people in your community that want it to happen, but it's better if you can demonstrate that you represent 10 times that number of people. Time. Make sure you allow enough. Factor in any consultation. For example, a lot of the funders require you to demonstrate that your community actually wants it. So you need to carry out a consultation campaign, even if it's just a due report through local groups that already exist, they've already got their networks. Factor in that consultation. It could take a couple of weeks. Also gathering quotes for work. We find this with the Rural Community Energy Fund. You've got to have three quotes. You've got to be able to assess how you've chosen the quotes, for example. And when you put out an invitation to tender, you, you probably need to allow a couple of weeks at least to get replies back. So you need to do all of this first before you even start writing your bid. Because that will provide you with the narrative, the explanation, the evidence that you're going to need to write in the boxes on your application. Repeat bids to charity funders. Ensure your stewardship has been high. Stewardship is basically saying thank you, as you guess. If you've been funded in the past, make sure you have kept that previous funder up to date with your success. You've said thank you again and again and again. Stay in their heart and their mind because they are the first people you should be going back to for your next funding. They've already invested in you once. Some charities, charitable givers will think, right, we've already invested in you, we are now going to spread our, our wealth into other places. But others will invest in you and want to get involved. They'll want to go on your journey every, every year. So it's always worth asking. That's it, save research. Next is collaboration. This is my key word. Most funders like to see beneficiaries working together. They want to show, you need to show wide community engagement involving people, demonstrating the need, as I mentioned earlier. Ensure that you've learned from your peers and you have adopted best practice where possible. Establish optimal links with other groups and stakeholders. And partner with others. So collaboration again. It will enable greater impact, greater reach, better influence. And then consider other group types to be lead applicant if that suits. Especially if your group is young, lacking maturity, doesn't have enough evidence. Especially if your group is young, lacking maturity, doesn't have enough evidence or can't prove impact. A lot of the funds I've mentioned today have, are relevant only to registered charities. So if that precludes you, buddy up with them. If they're interested in sharing your mission, they perhaps could be the lead applicant and you can share the delivery of the project, share the money, share the impact and share the reach. So it could work out brilliant to collaborate. Next is about getting your figures right. I'm sure most of you are great at organising your own businesses in your, in your day jobs. The funders want to see excellence, that your organisation can handle money well. They want to see that you're a really trustworthy place to put their money. Demonstrate a longer term funding plan. So showing sustainability, not just in a, in an environment sense, but in a longevity sense. You've got to show that you, it's another way of showing that you are a good place to put their money, that the outputs, the outcomes will be long-lived, that it will be the next thing, then the next thing after that. Keep a detailed budget sheet for each unique funder to demonstrate how that money will be spent. We always advocate making multiple applications at the same time. It wastes time to wait for the outcome of one application before you start the next. You can always, if you receive two bids for the same thing at the same time, you can always go back to the funder and say, look, we've been funded elsewhere, really lucky. Can we hold on to your money? Can we spend it on something different? Can we expand what we said we'd originally bid for? But if you keep a detailed budget sheet for each funder, when they call you up, which they may do, then you can dive straight into it and you know where you are because it can, it can get a bit of a muddle otherwise. Many charitable funders expect to see in-kind funding. By that, I mean resources that you might have been lent, all of your volunteer time and any assets that you get to use for free. So if you can, place a value on it. There are various calculators online and add that into your spreadsheet. You can add that into just how you describe the overall project value. You might say have a 20K project, but your in-kind contribution might be worth eight, 10K. So call it a 28, a 30K project. And then the, the, the funder will see how much your community wants it because you're putting in that much resource. So put a value on it and add it into your calculations. Get solid quotes, don't just get ballpark ones. And avoid estimating figures. It's really important to avoid using round numbers. If you put rounded numbers in your bid, it looks like you're guessing, it looks like you haven't got the proper figures and that you are not as organised as you're making out. You've got to show that you're trusted because grants are an investment in your organisation. Next is the monitoring, evaluation and impact. Don't ever consider this as an add-on at the project end. It's really important to factor in this at the beginning. Planning for it helps you to know what to achieve and when. And it also increases your productivity. It's your milestones, I suppose, it's a good place, good place to start thinking about it. It's a reminder to collect the right information. And it can bring clarity and consistency. And if you've got that parity and consistency right from the beginning, any problems that might flag up are flagged up earlier and then you can address them earlier, ensuring that your project doesn't go off track or doesn't fail. Monitoring, evaluation and impact may flag up the need for additional funding partway through your, your programme. There are multiple free tools available online. And there's some, it's the, it's the real buzzword at the moment. There's so much available online for free. There's the BBC Children in Need Evaluation Framework, there's the lottery, there's the Heritage Lottery Fund, there's the Arts Council. All of those places have invested so much expertise in developing models that are suitable. And most of them you'll find are free. So go and have a look around. And if you're struggling to find one that suits you, I can probably help you. So just drop us a line. And know the funder, that's my next slide. Consider the funder's priorities and ensure you fit well. Think about who your funder is accountable to. The two strands I've been talking about, statutory and charitable. Statutory funders, they're accountable to their community and or policy and or political priorities. Charitable funders, on the other hand, they're accountable to their trustees or their board, their governing document they've set out, perhaps their community and the funding priorities that they've set out. And ensure that your appeal, your application is actually central to their priorities. And if in doubt, cool, don't waste your time. It's really important to know the funder, try and get into their mindset, not just striving forward in the belief that your project is great, your project is going to be great in the mindset of that person, that, that group of decision makers who are going to be providing the funds. Much of the advice I've given so far mostly relates to fundraising from, from charities where much less specific guidance is available. The statutory funding is a lot more stringent, but the charitable funding quite often is down to personal, the personal values of the people making the decision. Especially if that charitable trust is derived from an endowment, from a family legacy, for example. And you can find out more, much more about that organisation just by doing some research on the funder. Timing, this is a quick one. Bid early if you can, where funds are limited. Demand is often very high, so don't leave it to the last minute. I, it freaks me out if I, if I leave it to the last minute, other people can work to the wire, but I can't. But I find the benefit of getting in early is if you leave yourself some time from being, having a complete bid that's ready to submit to actually the submission date, you can carry on thinking about it, carry on discussing it, building in more positive attributes to your bid. And then you've got time rather than being rushed. It's also worth getting bids in early because some funders will close when they've reached a certain capacity for a certain number of bids. You've probably all heard about the Salix funding, not relevant for this group necessarily, but it fills up in a matter of hours as soon as it's open. It's a strange one, but it does happen sometimes with charitable funders. So actually, how to make applications? Got a few slides here around creating your bid. Here is some, some high level advice, just some summary advice on framing and presenting your project, so to speak. This is what I always do. Take 10 minutes to sketch out a proposal in bullet points on a blank piece of paper. Say it out loud, perfecting it until it makes sense to you and then someone else. And then go back and refine that bullet list. It really helps you to focus what your answers in each section should be and avoid sort of cutting and pasting into more than one box. Always build your application using Word. Don't use the online forms for the creative stage of what you're doing. Put it in Word and you can share it among your team, it's much easier. General tips. Guidance document, read it loads of times, read it again and again and again to make sure you haven't missed anything. Concurrent bidding, bid to several funders at a time if you can. Always start with a blank sheet, bullet points, as I've mentioned, and then expand them later. Never cut and paste text from elsewhere because if you cut from a previous application, it won't be the right tone, the right voice, the fund is different, they'll, they'll need a different approach. Consistent style. It's easy for a group to feel, it's a lot of work making an application. So they'll spit it up and they'll answer different bits. One person should own the application right in their own voice. A lot of this guidance is much more relevant for charitable funders than the statutory ones, I should add. Be concise, short sentences, no jargon, waffle or acronyms unless you're going to obviously explain the acronym at the start. Quality appearance. Ensure you've got consistent layout, font size. It sounds silly, but I've seen, I've mentored lots of fundraisers and staggered, I've been staggered at the, what they think good presentation is, if it's different alignment, different fonts. It's just irritating. And if it irritated me, you just don't know who's going to be reading your application and making a decision. If they receive so many more applications than, than, than they can look at, they may just, like a job application, put you on the no pile if, if it annoys them. So avoid it. Fresh eyes, ask somebody else to review before you make that final submission, just in case. And again, this relates to having plenty of time. And once you're successful, build that relationship that comes back to the stewardship. Say thank you, involve them, see if they want to be involved in the running of what you're doing, the project, the outcomes, any, any events, publicity. See what they like because the more you can keep them on board, the more, the greater your opportunity will be to get them to fund you again. Now, I could talk for hours on this subject and you won't want to hear me waffling on any further. But I would say in summary, that competition at the moment is huge. So don't waste your time on a poor bid. And remember the stewardship. Past funders are the first ones to ask in your next funding round. Less important, say for statutory funders, well, it's more limited, but those charitable sector funders, you've got to get that relationship going. And that's me. So if you're not sure where to start. The Essex Groups are really, anyone, contact me if you'd like some help. But the Essex Groups, let's stay on after the meeting and see if we can put joint, joint bid ideas together. And basically talk with us, we can link you with like-minded people wherever you are, whatever organisation you are or whatever stage. That's it, thank you. I can see there are lots of questions, so I'll stop sharing and I'll try to answer them.
Thank you Nicola. Actually, it looks like a lot of the questions were about a particular project. Yeah, questions about, well, actually lots of questions were Ollie putting in lovely projects he wants to share with people. And there was, there was one question about electric car point, car charging points. But I think we should open this now to questions, if people have questions about fundraising or as you said, how we're going to link people, which does it, well, let's start with, do people have particular questions for Nicola about projects that they're working on at the moment? And I just invite you to unmute yourself and start your video so we can see you and you can wave your hands.
Well, if no one's got a question, I'll at least make a statement. I thought that was excellent Nicola. I'm, I'm kind of almost thinking, boy, there's a lot there to digest, which might reflect some of the lack of questions because yeah, there's, there's a lot. I think we're all at, I can certainly speak for Sustainable Danbury. We're at the stage where we're at the beginning and therefore we're trying to plot our journey. And that's certainly a very useful playbook that you've just provided. So hopefully the slides will be sent out and the hot links will all work because it's a really good reference. Thank you.
Thanks very much. I will send the, the presentation. I can also, I don't know if the, the hot links will, will work, but I can certainly send that out as a Word document because I've got that separately. But yes, there's a lot of links in there, but thank you Stuart.
Okay, oh, oh, well, so Malcolm Lucky Alden and then Antoinette Wisby have questions. Oh, and Ollie has a question. So should we go Malcolm, Antoinette, Ollie, then Robert Mitchell?
Yes, hi Nicola. Been getting over Covid, so, and also delivering the Eco Festival, which we've had to put off in Colchester. So my whole being has been sort of driven on, on that volunteering as well. So it's a question of balancing bringing in income at the same time as, as well as trying to do community and volunteering projects. So we're shuffling quite a lot. We've increased our membership for Eco Colchester and I think we're at a stage now going to do a debrief and then look at putting a poll out to look at where, where we're putting our energies, basically. Where is the best place to put them? Is it retrofitting schools and village halls and community groups and centres like that? And as you said, scaling it up. So that's where, where we're at and that's been really, really informative and the points that you went through. So thank you for that. And I will communicate with the Colchester Group and we'll see what, what, what projects we could potentially do. We've obviously e-cargo bikes is going fantastically down our way. But I think, yes, we're all kind of saying at the moment, our, our time as individual human beings and the time that we've got available to us is really important. So I think it's a really big thing is to question where the best intentions, where's my energy best placed?
Yeah, I think you've raised some great points there. I'd suggest setting a volunteer task for one of your volunteers to capture. Try and calculate the value of all of that volunteer time because I know you guys have put so much into what you're doing, so many fantastic outcomes already, even if they, some of them might be small. Capture it all because that data will be really useful for you to use in your narrative to, on funding applications. And even if you are not sure about which project to start with, just spend time on, on planning and preparing for which project might be a priority. Follow the recommendation of the majority of the people and of course, the opportunity that might be presented later on to make those projects larger. And you know, we've got the renewable heat incentive for, the RHI for the non-domestic is gone. Perhaps that will come back. So whatever you can do to line yourself up in to become ready, that sort of thing. You've got the, got different prices in solar panels. So it's kind of, I do understand it's difficult to judge when is the right time to do things, but well done.
Thanks for that, yeah. It's, it's pulling together. One thing that's really happened has been networking. So with working with voluntary services, working with Active Essex, working pulling. And that was one of the big ideas in the first place for the festival was to bring all the groups of people together. So therefore, as a community, we've become stronger and therefore we can then progress with a bigger voice and a bigger selection of people, rather than just falling on the heads of certain individuals. So I think that, that's been a real sort of key success of it. All this is knitting everyone together. So yeah, looking forward to the next stages now. So thanks for that.
Antoinette. You need to unmute yourself, Antoinette. And then Ollie and then Robert. So Ollie and Robert, get ready to unmute yourselves.
Still muted.
There you are, you're unmuted. I, I think we heard you, Antoinette. No, we haven't, you're still muted, right? Oh, Robert, why don't you speak while Antoinette unmutes herself?
Okay, it's just some observations. I did put a little comment in the, in the chat. We mustn't forget that charging and parking are never free. They're always being paid for by somebody, unfortunately. And charging in the longer term, the electric vehicle and charging strategy lead is being, is going. I believe there are interviews for the person who's going to take that job on next week. So there, there is a huge amount of work that's going to be going on in determining the electric vehicle charging points and, you know, the infrastructure that needs to go with them. There are a lot of private EV chargers already. There are a lot of public ones as well. If you look at the zap map, you see that they're blitzed all over the place. And the challenge is going to be to coordinate that. It's a bit of a poisoned chalice, I think, but it's, there is a great amount of work. It needs to be tied in though, because all the districts and boroughs and cities, et cetera, are also having, trying to put their own strategy together. So it's going to be a huge amount of partnership working. And there will be requirement to try and pull in funds and, and look for what grant funding we can, can be found. Without any shadow of a doubt. It's, it's just a big section. We also actually with Community Energy South, I don't know whether anybody else was there. If people can keep their minds open, if they're thinking about, like Malcolm, I'm also just recovering from Covid. Next week I pop out of the bubble, as it were, not being very comfortable. The, there are a lot of watermills or there were a lot of watermills around Essex. And in particular, where there are areas where there's a half decent drop, there are many that could be repurposed for community energy. And if you're in your local environment and area, et cetera, some are appropriate and some are not. But it's certainly something else to think about if anybody hasn't. I know most people will immediately click onto solar panels or possible wind turbines, et cetera. But actually, water power also has a great deal to speak for itself.
Thanks, Robert.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would add that going back to the idea of collaboration, we always Thank you. I would add that going back to the idea of collaboration, we are always very keen to support organisations to work together. So like you say about the watermills, if there's distributed resource, let's think about a way for. People to come together across the whole county to create a community benefit society perhaps to. To tie in all of those smaller resources into something bigger, just an idea. It might not work, but that's the sort of thinking I'm, I'm quite keen to follow up with. Thank you.
So Antoinette and then Ollie.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I'm actually from Suffolk and I, I've seen, you know, what Community Energy South has done, you know, they've done work within Suffolk as well. Thank you so much for what you've been saying today. It's been really helpful to me for funding. But what concerns me is really with so many people applying for, with very few funders at this stage of climate crisis. That is extremely worrying. And I wonder, is there pressure on the government to put more money out there so that people, when they apply, can actually get the money? I mean, it's not up to parish councils, for example, to put pressure on government. Are there agencies who are putting pressure on government apart from, say, Friends of the Earth? And, you know, obviously they are doing that, but other, are there other sources?
Yeah.
Thank you, Ollie.
I'll, I'll carry on and then I'll go on to my questions. So thanks for that, Antoinette. I think, you know, with COP26. And the whole momentum is that there are a lot more funding opportunities coming up for, for community. And I think that's demonstrated in Nicola's presentation. You know, there are a lot, but it's about coordinating it really. And so just make sure that, you know, if you are, you've got your plan and your story right. You know, and, and then just reach out with us, but try and coordinate it as a region. There is a lot of lobbying going on to government in the background. We do a lot of Community Energy South. And I know that Essex County Council do a lot as well. And the team from the Eastern New Energy Group. Who, you know, the European project, there's a few people on this call are there doing that as well. So there is a lot, but just feedback to us. And we'll share that with, with the region, you know, if you, if you have concerns and what have you. But yeah, I, I think you'll find, you know, the whole push towards net zero. And the fact that the region has a net zero strategy, the local authorities have a net zero strategy and government does as well. That, yeah, it's just a matter of being organised. And, and I'm working with a number of communities down in, in the South East. And my message to them is have a plan, you know, put your plan in place as a community, you know, find out your carbon footprint. You know, where your community energy options are and just, you know, be prepared sort of thing.
Thank you very much.
So, and then on the other thing that I was going to bring up, which was as regard to Malcolm and Colchester. Malcolm, it sounds like, you know, you've got to the stage where you really need core funding to support an officer. And that, and that's a good stage to get to and it can be overwhelming at times. So I just wanted to acknowledge that and say, you know, you brought everybody together. So, you know, look at core funding as well. And the other element was. There's a whole another stream of energy champion work that is being supported. So we've been working with Essex County Council to get an energy champion, a fuel poverty where, where people check energy bills and give advice in communities. And there's a real opportunity to spread that out wider. And maybe, you know, get five energy champions across the region working. So, you know, if you are interested in that as well, do come back to Nicola. Thank you.
Thank you, Ollie. Stuart, and if you've got a question, can you raise your hand so I can get you, let you know to get ready?
Yeah, I was just putting a comment in the, in the comment box about hydro. There's an excellent Belgian company called Turbulent. That has an, an ideal design, I think, for low head drops. I'm looking at that for the Chelmsford Blackwater Navigation, which has a number of weirs. So any canalised river might be perfect for that. My, my main point was actually referring back to the excellent document that is the Net Zero Report from ECAC. There's a lot in there about community energy, but one of the things that I thought was very powerful was on page 25. Under the recommendations about energy was that all large scale renewable developments to have an element of community ownership by 2021. Well. We're in 2021. Community energy is still in its infancy in Essex, but that commitment is pretty powerful. How do we engage with any developer as a collective maybe about ensuring that that recommendation can be at least partway achieved?
Nicola, is that a question for you or is that the question for someone at Essex County Council?
I think we could all chip into that one.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think community owned energy is becoming more powerful. I'm seeing that in other RSEF applications in other places in the country. They want to see, I think it's at least fifty, at least fifty percent or might be fifty one percent owned by the community. I think that's really powerful and it shows that we all can have a role to play. Haven't got a specific response on that one, Stuart, but I think we should explore that.
Yeah, I mean, I had, so let me tell you the gestation. So in Danbury, we have a large scale 23 gigawatt. Mega, no, megawatt proposal in a solar farm, so 23 hectares. So fairly large scale one, it's within the, the boundary of Danbury. We had some interaction with them and they have offered us a minority share. But initially we thought we were, our group is far too immature to be able to organise the fundraising or anything. We just didn't have the sort of support base or the publicity or anything to go ahead with this. I also got feedback from Low Carbon Hub in Oxford that they had considered, because they were also working with the same developer on their. Solar farm that they've now wholly owned in, in Oxford. I forget the name of it, but they, they now wholly own a, a large scale, a similar sized solar farm. They decided not to go down a partial ownership, but to go for a full ownership of one of the many that are in Oxford. At the weekend at the Gridserve event, when I talked to Michael, he was of the opinion that we should still be talking to them. So I guess my view is there's clearly differences or different views on, on, on how community energy could engage with the large scale developers. It's clearly a recommendation from ECAC that we should. It's for early days, but should we be bold and be going in and saying, well, okay, we can do this or, or find a way. Michael was positive. I meant to come back to you Nicola as well and, and sort of, you know, maybe we need to get a position on this between CES, ECC. And, you know, the various community energy groups in, in Essex.
Thank you. I think Luciana might have, have a view on that as well. Luciana?
Yeah, so just following up on that comment and I can, I don't think Ollie will mind that we, we are having those conversations Stuart. I think I've shared with you before, both as part of, of the work that we're doing on a solar standard, which for solar farms. Which we are working with the districts to find out what kind of, of level benefit we believe. Please, is appropriate for this kind of large scale development. So it's something that I recognise that we've now, we have a lot of development in Essex. We're running behind, but we're having those conversations with districts and we are exploring with Community Energy South. We believe it's a significant and appropriate level of both benefit and, and ownership in the longer term as well. I think you were absolutely right. That's the recommendation of the Climate Commission and a recommendation that we wanted to, to take on. We're just really at this stage of analysing what, what is the size of the benefit in relation to developments? And really happy to have this conversation with the groups as well, from your experience. And will you think it would be the right benefit for your community and, and with all the groups in the, in the. In the country really, what they are experiencing in dealing with developers, what they think is achievable in the short term and in the long term as well, I think.
Thanks, Luciana. I don't know if you want to continue this or with, because with and who repair and reuse cafe have a. Other question or observation they'd like to make?
Yeah, okay, sorry, I did change the title. We're Community Energy Colchester. My name's Christopher. Something that I wanted to point out that our journey is, when we first started, it was quite scary and overwhelming. And so I just really want to reach out to the other groups out there who are thinking of starting up a project. We didn't opt to go for solar. We were interested in some of the potential of tidal energy. But what we've, what we've tried to do is to go for the fuel poverty support. Which is, which is almost groundbreaking to get people trained. And we're, we're going to be going out with Essex, with Community Energy South, going out into the community and, and helping on a very practical level. So just to summarise, lots of big projects, really scary. Understanding that starting on the ground and we're happy to share our experience. Don't be overwhelmed, just be quite practical, quite pragmatic, starting small, building up your portfolio, your funding portfolio slowly. And then people are quite prepared to take you more seriously and it's not as scary for, for all of you. And you can achieve something in the short term. Thank you.
Thank you. Zach, at Energy For All, do you want to contribute? I see you have in the chat box, but you might want to speak out loud.
Hi, just to follow up with what Stuart was saying. We have helped groups kind of take ownership of solar farm or hydro or wind opportunities. Did you say 23 megawatts, Stuart?
Yes, it's a, yeah, it's a proposal at this stage. It's currently going through approval at Chelmsford City Council.
Hi, that's a reasonable scale.
Yes, it's, yeah, it's, it's a fairly big one. I think, you know, 10 million, 12 million sort of total investment, yeah.
Hi, that if you had the chance to take a significant share in that or even total ownership, then give us a call.
Yes, well, it's clearly lots of money, but yeah, I mean, ultimately. I, I guess my question was about what constitutes the right sort of ownership. I mean, obviously the agreement, the recommendation here talks about. An, an element of community ownership. Is a small element worth it? Or is it, are we best to leave that to the private sector and focus on, on other things that the community energy could do? For example, industrial, commercial or schools or whatever. Or is it important? And I, and I think there is a political question here about building support for solar in general. By showing that even the large scale solar farms have an element of community energy ownership and what is that element? Is it five percent, 10%? Is it a controlling stake? Or is it indeed one in five is in fact owned by community energy or something like this? What's, what, that's, that's I guess where I think, you know, a, a more complete strategy is required.
Ollie has an observation, but before he does.
Very much depends on agreements on each side, I think.
And, and so my observation is solar farms can make quite considerable profit. So if it's owned by the community. You can invest that property, that profit back into your community rather than into some overseas pension fund. Ollie?
Yeah.
Over to you, Ollie.
Yeah, like I say, one, sorry, one thing that's coming to me and we have done a webinar on this in the past, it might be good to go back to refer to it. But yeah, we, we're having discussions with organisations like Low Carbon. And how, you know, they can work with communities for future ownership. So we're not quite there yet, but having the Climate Change Commission, you know, the strategy behind us is really helpful in that. So let's keep that dialogue going. It's occurred to me and I've just messaged Nicola. Is that, you know, now we've got a network of core groups across Essex that we should really. Almost set up a steering group to look at all these different themes and all meet more regularly. And, you know, dissect them all, fuel poverty, solar farms, hydro schemes, school, school roofs and things like that. And start, you know, dissecting them a little bit more together so that you guys can go back and share it with Danbury or Colchester. You know, and, and so, yeah, that would be. I, I, I couldn't agree more, Ollie, and that, that was a topic of conversation at Gridserve as well about, about doing that. And so, you know, I would certainly be supportive of that. I think there's a number of issues that all the groups have about, you know, how, how. Where, what is local, for example, you know, is Danbury, Danbury or is Danbury mid Essex rural? You know, what happens if there's a Chelmsford one as well, you know, how, how do we fit with that? So there's, there's all sorts of strategic questions that I think we need to work through. And, and then when you, you know. When you're going to your locality and showing local benefit, you know, how local does that need to be? A small hamlet might see that as very local, you know, whereas Chelmsford obviously would see that as a, as a citywide thing. So I think there's a few questions that we need to sort of flesh out if we're going to have community energy across the whole of the county. And that every, you know, every, every locality has a community energy fund it can latch on to, you know. Is that twenty, is that five, is that 300? Who knows, yeah. Well, this is it. And so luckily we do have a benchmark and evidence from particularly East Sussex and Brighton area. Where there are those 12 original groups who we worked with back in 2011. Where some of them are really neighbouring, but they've just, they've followed different themes or worked together. They collaborate regularly and they share skills and what have you. So, yeah, definitely. So that would be a really good next step. Yeah. And also I, I, I wonder whether you could have subgroups, you know, you could have an overarching, you know, mid Essex one. And then you have some, you know, you raise funds for, you know, one, one place, you know, Danbury, next place it's, you know, Rital or somewhere like that. And, you know, but still managed from one, because there is an overhead with having smaller. You know, a lot of us have been through the journey of learning about, you know, community benefit societies and the structure, learning about technology, engaging with communities. If, if it's too fragmented, it's just too much of an overhead. So again, there are some strategic elements there, I think, as we progress. And certainly if we're going to do, you know, have community energy at the heart of Essex's future energy strategy. Perhaps better to sort that out earlier than later.
I think Luciana has a comment to make.
Yeah, so we are committed to supporting that Stuart and we will organise a follow up meeting from this. So you will hear from us on how we can keep collaborating as a, as a group, an Essex wide group. Or forum, partnership or umbrella organisation, however we want to call this. We're really keen to support. Let's get another meeting organised to start like collaborating all the groups together. Because we recognise there's a lot of skills from, in each group that can help and you can all help each other. And I think there is a point of an Essex wide community organisation as well. To perhaps engage with developers, to perhaps engage with larger projects. Perhaps it's better if we all join up as a, as an Essex wide organisation. And then we, we are in a better position than to, to like a larger schemes as well. And, and one of the points I wanted to pick up on was the, about capacity, which Malcolm raised in Colchester. And, and I think it's probably a common theme on, on, on community energy in general, or community organisations in general. So the climate fund we, which we talked about, one of the things I was keen and I lobbied. The team behind Matt as well, that I wanted to see support for staff time. And I, I believe that this is something I would like to encourage all the groups to think about this. For the next year or so, whether they can get funding to support some staff. And then you've got more capacity to, to lead on projects. Perhaps it's, it's something that the climate fund can help now for a year. And then you start to be a bit more self sustaining, you get all the grants and then you can grow your, your organisation. I would encourage all the groups to think about that as well, how to increase capacity now that there's funding available. And then help with the first few years, which are harder for groups to, to start with. And then they will have more, more the skills and, and the networks to keep going.
Thanks, Luciana. Thanks, Luciana. Does anyone else have anything they would like to raise at this point in time? And I feel I should hand over to Nicola and Ollie really, because they're liaising more directly with Essex than I.
Can I just make a swift comment? I put it in the chat, Nicola. I think it was on one of your slides. There seems to be a community interest group in Kelvedon, but I'm not aware of it and I live there.
Yes, I'm going to delve into the map, see a bit more detail. I'll get back to you directly.
Brilliant, very kind. Thank you. Stuart.
Stuart.
Sorry, it's me again. It's just that in the chat, there was discussion about Southend. And I'm looking at a picture of Matt Nicholas and I met him at the weekend. And so Southend is not technically part of Essex County Council, but is it for the purposes of community energy worth including Southend in an Essex wide group? Question mark. I would say yes.
It certainly is. We've discussed this with the Essex County Council team. They're very keen to ensure community energy happens across the whole area. And yes, we have been talking to Matt. We've got emerging ideas for a large project there. So we're just trying to work through, we're talking with Matt, but we'd really like to support Matt to grow a community group. So he's got more people with him along that journey. Yeah, that's a project in motion.
Liz, you're muted.
And Ollie's been, been called on. Does anyone else have anything more they'd like to contribute to this discussion now? Because I know that it was the hope of Nicola. Well, I'll hand it over to you, Nicola.
Yeah, it's Matt. Matt's raised his hand. Hi, Matt. You're on mute.
Yes. Hi. Thanks, thanks a lot. Great discussion. Yeah, I'd love to try and get involved. And having met everyone at Gridserve, it was lovely to feel that community energy. And we've discussed, like you said, some interesting projects which we can do locally. And I'd love to have anyone else's support or ideas and contributions in the that border between Southend, Leonsey, all the way through to Tharwick. Because, yeah, we've got, we've got lots of possibilities to try and do things from, you know, the, the solar. There's definitely more projects on EV because we are highly tourist focused as well. So I think there's lots of projects. And as we've discussed, who'd like to get involved? I keep pushing the agenda. So yes, we're there. We're small. We're starting at the scary small end of the project. And I see somebody else has just mentioned that they are also from Leonsey. So there's at least two of us. So we will, we will get there at some point soon. So thank you.
Great.
Let me just mention something quickly in regards to point about networking, keep collaborating. If people do use Facebook, there is a programme which Essex County Council supports, the Changemakers. And there's a discussion Facebook group there. So if you, most of you at least, use Facebook. And I will put in the chat, it's another way to keep collaborating, not just between us with an interest in energy projects, but also with all the green groups across Essex. I just recently found out there's one in Tharwick as well, organising a little fair festival. So it's another way to find out about other active groups. And I will put the link on the chat.
Just before you, Ollie, Sarah Leonard Brown has something to say. But we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Sorry, I didn't put my microphone down. Just wanted to say thank you for a fantastic webinar, really useful. I'm in Leonsey. I've been developing a community energy project slowly over the last three years involving local churches. Got a lot of churches who are not, not protected, a lot of more modern churches. They've all got huge south facing roofs. There's a huge number of them in this area. And it's a really good, scalable developmental project that would help the direct local communities around those churches. And I'd really love to have any help I can to develop that project, please.
That's great to hear, Sarah. So you will get in contact with Nicola, won't you? Yes. In my community down in where I am, we're actually working with the church group. They've got a 60 year old oil boiler. Sixty, you know, it's, it's incredible. And they use the most amount of solar. So we're looking at how they can heat the church. It's very complicated. There's a listed building. But also power it, they've got a field out the back, which isn't the graveyard. And then their neighbour as well has now moved to an air source heat pump in quite significantly large house. So actually, we're looking at how they can power the church to renewable heating and then also share it with their neighbour. So actually sell it to their neighbour. So it's, there's lots of initiatives like that. So it'd be great to speak to you about that. And I was just going to say with Matt and Southend, we had really good discussions coordinated by Essex County Council with Coastal Capital Trains, who are also looking at kind of this whole race to net zero and are really interested in community energy. So that discussion's moving on really well as well. So there's a real theme along that coastal region. So really exciting. I'll pass on that. So I got a bit distracted at half past because my son was having to leave to go to college and point him in the right direction.
And likewise, I have to say, it looks like there are still people who want to carry on discussing. And I have to leave for other reasons. So I'm going to hand over to you, Nicola. I hope that's okay with you. You're now hosting the session. It might be that people want to carry on chatting. It might be that people want to go. But thank you, everybody for turning up. I've sent the slides out to you already. And I'll leave you in Nicola and Ollie's capable hands.
Thank you, Liz.